Good evening, it's 5 o'clock and I'd like to call the August 14th, 2025 work session of the Stanton City Council to order. I will now entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas.
Madam Mayor.
Councillor Woods.
I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councillor Overholzer, any discussion? Mr. Kessiker, would you call the roll please?
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kessiker. Bringing us to item two, we have an update on Queen City Mischief and Magic Festival. Ms. Beauregard.
While we're waiting for Ms. Lynch to gather her witches. The festival is on its 10th year. September 27th, 28th.
Am I here?
You are here now.
I mean this.
You're starting right, yes, yes ma'am.
Hi everybody, thanks for coming.
Good evening, Sarah.
I've got some very special guests joining me and they have some presents.
Oh my gosh.
This is Mrs. Umbridge, Dolores, if you know her well.
Of course.
We have Mrs. Minerva McGonigal, Professor Snape, Filch, don't cross him, and Headmaster Dumbledore.
Right now.
Oh my gosh.
Laura is hiding back there because she just got from the gym and she's.
And Laura.
Yeah. So whenever we travel, we travel colorfully and magically and excitedly about town. I guess when we're done, we'll hand out some prizes, but I just wanted to speak today to you all. Thank you for inviting me to do so, thank you for supporting this event from its inception and, you know, being the kind of city, however many renditions of council and management and whatever, since this thing started 10 years ago. I love to, and I get invited to speak a whole lot about it right before the event. I wish it was right after the event. Just discuss sort of the process and every single time I learn something new when you start talking about your passion project. And the thing that I keep coming back to is you just don't know what you don't know until you are halfway through it. So the first year Laura was on board, we were best friends and worked together at Baha for many, many years before the first one. And by this time we had kids and what have you, but we thought we were going to have like a one day Harry Potter birthday party in July. Corey, you were around the foot, you're right.
Yeah.
Everybody was making everything real quick. Met with the city assume, you know, estimated 500 to 1500 people and we got 8 to 10,000. And that year was probably the clunkiest because who would have ever thought that could happen? Since then, I always use the analogy of like Cinderella's dress, like leading up to the festival, it's almost like the birds are holding the fabric and the mice are cutting, sewing it so that she can have a beautiful dress, the way this thing comes together. We have changed very much from the beginning one day event to a fall weekend. Thanks to the city's involvement, we have expanded and headed off many problems. Every year we think we've got it figured out, like, oh, this is our perimeter, this is, and every year there's something that we need to mitigate. This year's the Wharf and when I speak about working with the city, this year I think is my proudest because it was clear from the beginning how invested the city was in the experience of the people, the small businesses at the Wharf. And I have tried to relay that time and time again to those businesses and to anyone that will listen. Very early on in our planning meetings, we talked about how we could prevent any sort of negative impact down there. So what we've done is rerouted the shuttles, they're going to release all of the passengers and all of the people that come from the shuttle lot will come and go from right outside Sunspots, will start their day down there. We're going to have a little bit less activity down there just to play things safe, but we'll have love letters, we'll have sorting. The businesses down there are still participating, I think they'll have a great time, we're going to keep the stage program down there. And then we'll just filter people up toward Beverly and for the whole festivals because they used to get dropped off like on the Arcadia end of Beverly and be welcomed down all four blocks of Beverly, each colored and coated by Hogwarts houses. The other thing I love about the city, and I don't know if you guys know this, Brad, I know you do because you've been in several planning meetings, but our public servants are, the city employees become superheroes at weekend. Our fans, we, we got the Ministry of Public Works shirts a couple of years ago and our fans like run around and try to collect all the pictures with all the public works people. The Stanton PD, the first, I think they'd actually gotten away with doing this unnoticed the first year, but they were giving presents to our visitors. So I busted tall Jeff Hilton, I think was bending down trying to deal with a child and I thought he was like helping him pick something up or something. He's like, no, I'm giving out these wands that Captain Brown ordered for us and I was like, I didn't know you guys did that. So thank you all for the buy-in on all levels, it's really nice. What that gets you is a lot of magic and not a whole lot of mischief. We get, you know, we've grown from about 10,000 to the last tracking with the heat maps and data provided by the Virginia Tourism Corporation, probably approaching 40,000 visitors for the weekend. Businesses now have to report to us the impact on their business so that we can comply with that grant and they have reported anywhere from a 1600% increase to, one lady told a really cool story with that where she has more transactions in the 48 hours of QCMM than she does in the first quarter of every year. So that's pretty awesome, that's like three months of customers in 48 hours. And the first year, you know, you don't know what you don't know, more than one business came to me and said, we, this is July, we were not going to be here at Christmas and now that this event has happened and this weekend has happened, we can buy inventory and have a Christmas season, retail season. That's kind of the boring part. The other thing.
Not at all.
I mean, I know, I know it's not boring for you guys. And I always want to say it because I know that your support comes at great expense and I hope it's always worth it. And if, even if it wasn't worth it in the dollars, the way that our visitor sees our town, I get a little, I mean like single moms come and they can get all of their kids' faces painted because the whole event is free. And that's another thing that very early on like defined the event where we just sort of did that because we didn't know how to do anything different. And you know, the second there's success, people start seeing dollar signs and we kept it free because of this one mother from Virginia Beach that came with her little hufflepuff bee to thank me. She'd never been able to get all of her kids' faces painted. So you can come here from Pennsylvania, you know, we get a lot of people from Philly, Virginia Beach, obviously Charlottesville, Richmond, and not spend a dime and have the best weekend of your year. That has translated to new residents, Mary Baldwin students, and people that just call Stanton their home away from home. And you know, almost monthly at the beginning, someone would come to Baha and say, I gotta tell you my story. Because they moved, they came for QCMM and they, they found a reason to get back here, either to visit or to live or what have you. So that's the part I really love talking about because it is the impact that you can't measure or put a price tag on or what have you, but it has enhanced our lives. The partnering with Virginia Tourism, I think, has been another huge benefit. Buckingham Branch, who I think will always be a huge partner in this town, they are so eager to help us every year. And then ourselves, like our lives, the people, starting with like eight or 10 of us and growing to more than 200 of us in the army of volunteers that make this thing happen, we all love each other so much. And we have a whole group of people, influencers, they don't know their influencers because they're not, they're like my age. They are coming from the Midwest in a pack of 12 to visit and attend and do some perform, like they'll, they'll appear this year, the Weasleys, the Four House Ghosts, we've got a couple other random little characters. So they'll appear and we'll film some content with them and you know, put it up on Facebook and get some recognition and, and make some genuine connections with people who share our fan base and our audience, but they have like a 200,000 person Facebook audience, so. I think the last thing I wanted to say was just thank you for believing in the magic, believing in magic and supporting this event and showing up. There are, there are certainly residents that evacuate for the weekend and some of them wisely like Airbnb their houses for the $1,000 for the weekend or whatever, but a lot of people show up and enjoy it. We call Friday sort of the locals night and it's not fully programmed by the festival just because of safety concerns and whatever, but it, there's plenty to see and do. I mean, these guys are going to start decorating Grand Piano 110 West, is that what it's called? They keep calling it 110, I'm like, just tell me the name. And so long before the festival, there will already be evidence of magic and Harry Potter and other, other franchises, so. That's it, I don't know if you guys have any questions or, I know these lovely people brought gifts as they always do. So you can hand out. Yeah. Oh, she's going to make you choose your, tell them, Minerva. That's right. Alrighty.
Thank you very much.
So much for everything.
One of our new ads this year is a rubber duck race, so.
Yes, absolutely, I hope so.
Light up rubber ducks.
Professor Snape. Snape. Thank you sir, I appreciate it. See, I'm getting names wrong.
Leslie, what does your wand look like?
Orange is my favorite color, but.
Thank you.
I'll just take the traditional one.
Oh my goodness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, alrighty.
Does the wand choose the wizard and the witch?
Thank you.
Oh my goodness.
My goodness.
Thank you. Thank you sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think. I can't believe that. Yeah. Do you all like the group picture with council?
Yes.
In the front with your wands?
Oh good.
Yes, please. If you guys want to get in front, we can just stand in back. Take your wands with you. What is it, Spilly Armus or whatever?
Off my jacket.
That's good.
There are no houses here.
They're going to take your picture first, McGonigal. I know, she's doing her magic thing.
Are you slithering or do you want to blow in the dark?
Yeah. Alright Mel, and Filch. Are you pleased?
I'm secretly Dumbledore is married to me.
Just to keep everything, you know, transparent. We like transparency.
Don't, don't shoot a spell yourself.
Oh wait a minute, Blake, we're doing it this way. Sorry, I know. Because otherwise you're doing yourself.
One, two, three.
Mischief. I can't wait, thank you. Thank you so much, thank you guys. Fun, fun time. Looking forward to it. I could get a very long video. Thank you guys. Thank you so much, good night Sarah, thank y'all for coming.
Thanks Sarah.
Thank you guys.
Bye Sarah, bye Laura. Alrighty, okay, are we on time? Oh good, we're on time. You would have a very disappointed son, John, if you came home without anything from mischief and magic. Alrighty, well, let's shake off the shivers there, that was fun. And we'll go on to our next update. Update on Valley Community Services Board's Crisis Receiving and Recovering Center project. Ms. Beauregard, please.
I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Kaufman who's going to introduce who we have this evening.
Sure, we have several staff here from the Valley Community Services Board and we have a few presenters. Executive Director Dr. McClanahan, as well as CFO John Sandy will be presenting today.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm not sure how you follow that, to be honest.
Well, hopefully you brought presents.
They were just saying, we should have brought presents, I didn't know. Hopefully we will give you a gift in a couple of years of CRC and Crisis Receiving Center and Stabilization Unit. I'm going to give most of this over to John Sandy who has all the facts, but I wanted to take a minute to say thank you all for approving the 10% funding that you gave us this year. We very much appreciate it and just wanted you to know that, that we very much appreciate it. John Sandy is our Director of Finance and he's going to do the presentation tonight with those kinds of, you have that in your packet, but he'll be talking about that. Then if you have questions for us, we have our Emergency Services Director Expert and I'll also be happy to try to tell you something that I might know. But anyway, I'll turn it over to John.
Good evening, Mr. Sandy, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for having us here, we're very excited about this project. It's been a long time coming, I haven't been with Valley too long, but I know this team behind me has spent a great deal of work trying to get ready to break ground, so I'm going to walk you through a presentation, we're going to talk a little bit about the facility, about where it's going to be located, what the needs are. Again, there's staff here to go talk about those needs or any additional questions, relay the program and then I'll go through the financials and hopefully give you all a good primer this evening. So what is the facility? It's just like it says, it's a very wordy name, hopefully we'll have a more succinct name, but it's, it does crisis receiving, stabilization and a detoxification unit. And it's going to be approximately 25,000, a little bit higher than that, about 25,495 square feet. It'll be on a 6.17 acre site and that site is in Fisherville. We were able to locate after an extensive and exhaustive search, looking at many different properties, a by right site that is zoned appropriately as general business in Augusta County in Fisherville and it's proximate to Augusta Health, which is very necessary for the facility to operate. We are working busily through hiring the first three initial staff and it will have a full staff complement of about 51 persons. That'll occur over three successive budget years. It'll be a full service overnight clinic and facility. And as many of you know, we hope that this will actually save localities money, especially related to your law enforcement, your sheriff's office, for all of our partners, we know that's important. The goal is to be able to get those deputies or those police officers back on the street to run calls as opposed to continually having to wait with a number of those clients that we would have at hospitals. At the same time, it'll save the hospitals, those emergency rooms typically are, can be full of our clients that would actually go to the facility and get treatment. So it should help with emergency waiting times for the general public. So again, it's, it's a really positive change for the community. We're projecting opening in September 2027. And here's a location of where the facility will be built and it is off of Tinkling Springs Road. You probably saw in the local media that there was a Wawa that was opened in Fisherville, which is exciting, so it'll be close to that Wawa. But it's very close to the hospital, less than I think about a mile and a half, maybe even closer to the hospital. Again, it is zoned general business, that is a light industrial commerce park. So they, the polygons you see in red are general business, the purple polygons are zoned, are, are light industrial. So some of our neighbors are going to be a trucking, a freight company and then there's some other commercial businesses that'll be located there. You'll notice that it is that parcel four, you'll see the cul-de-sac there in purple and it'll be in that polygon right above that cul-de-sac adjacent to the purple property. And it will not be adjacent, directly adjacent by parcel to any kind of residential. There is a residential neighborhood in green above that road, I think it's Wilson Lane. And, but there is a parcel between us in that, that residential neighborhood. This slide really shows you just a satellite view of the, of the site itself. You'll notice that there's a back burn, which is really a stormwater riparian area. Again, it is very close to waste and, to water and wastewater hookups, either on Wilson Boulevard or Wilson Lane. The entrance is likely to be across from the roadway that, that is, that is perpendicular to the cul-de-sac. So the building itself will face in the direction of the commercial use and not toward any other side. It also, according to our civil engineering work that we did preliminarily, it should meet all the setback requirements that Augusta County has and we hope to meet all the design requirements. And of course, the most important thing for us is they don't meet state licensure requirements. This is a diagram of a facility that was designed by ZMM Architects and it was a prototypical design that the Commonwealth of Virginia, through the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, provided us for a prototypical CRC facility. And we are choosing to use that facility, this is all new construction, to basically construct the programming that we need to serve our clients. It will have 16 beds and 16 chairs, full C-TAC, there will be group quiet and family rooms. There also will be a Sallyport for all law enforcement officers who have to bring clients to the facility. They will, those clients coming into the facility will be received in a, in a, a, a law enforcement Sallyport, so they will be blind to the public, so people will not really see the people who actually enter the facility. And that area itself will actually have higher standards for the law enforcement as those individuals are received until they are received into the programming parts of the facility. It also has medical services, there'll be a medical offices lab, pharmacy and med rooms and laundry, a kitchen, lobbying waiting rooms, a whole nine yards, so it is a fairly large facility, a lot of specialized space. Here is the facility as, as the prototypical design as positioned on our site. And this was done by Timmons, our civil engineer, who did a lot of preliminary work as we went through all of these different land selections. And it also includes all the buffer requirements that Augusta County has and it even shows where the wastewater and water hookups are. We met with Augusta Water very early on, on this site to determine whether it would require any expansion of their mains, it doesn't. The facility is not expected to make their, their main over, it'll, it'll be at capacity. It's at capacity and waited for all of the potential developments there. Again, there's a loading dock on the, on the back part, there's about 102 parking spaces for staff and public. There's also an emergency access lane around the facility and the positives side of that is first responders, it will be, first responders will be able to access the site, all parts of the site in any direction. It'll be sized to be able to accommodate even an aerial truck for fire. And again, it will also have a generator and a fire line loop, so that's probably more than you wanted to know, but it's got quite a bit of accommodation for first responders and law enforcement who have to be there and then certainly for our staff. Here's a look at the capital budget and this cap, this is the capital budget as of July. This budget has changed a little bit, but it's relatively 5 to 10% in our initial planning numbers. You can see the bulk of the money that we are receiving is from the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. We did receive an ARPA grant for about 800, it was a million dollar grant and we've drawn down part of that for some of the preliminary work related to the facility and to offset overhead costs. That was about 802,000 and many of you I'm sure have been wrestling with the cessation of ARPA funds. But the good news is the Commonwealth made, made sure that we could go ahead and maintain our funding of these ARPA funds. So that was good news for us. The Valley Community Services Board itself appropriated 1.5 million dollars at the end of fiscal year 2024. So we've set aside money. And then we're also receiving money, which is part of your ongoing 10% contribution, no more than what we've asked. We are using some of that money for the facility, for all four jurisdictions, it equates to about 2.3 million and that's over three year, a three year period. And again, as I've mentioned, some of the programming here relates to medical, there'll be medical facilities in the, in the facility itself. And then we're also excited to have a nonprofit corporation that was founded last year. It received its nonprofit status in November and that is called the Valley Community Outreach. And we're hoping to have some fundraising to support some of the furniture, fixtures and equipment for the facility at about a quarter million dollars. In terms of the, the, the cost of the facility, land was about 971,705 for 6.17 acres. That includes our commission for our property management group. Site development costs around 2.5, design engineering about 1.3, construction, which includes soft costs is about 10.9 million, or the site development includes the site costs, the construction's about 10.9 million and then FFNE and systems is around 1.2 million and contingency sits at 2.1 million. So almost all of those funds we have in our coffers, the only funds that we do not have in our coffers at this point, but we have a commitment from VDBHDS is a construction grant, which will likely be about 9.6 million. So we have written agreement that they will be providing us that grant, they want to see more progress on the facility. And one of the milestones that we're working on right now is hiring an A&E firm. We've met with a number of A&E firms, I think it was this week and we will be selecting a firm, we hope by the end of August. They will be looking at that prototypical design and hopefully providing some improvement based on all the stakeholders that are involved. Here's just a really quick look at the shares, you're going to see 75% of the funds really come from the state. Also 4% are passed through the ARPA funds to the state, so about 79%. Localities stand about 12% and then we have 8% with Valley's commitment of 1.4. Here is the estimated project timeline and again, this is as of today. And as many of you know, when you work through capital projects, it, you start off with a, a number of planning assumptions and as you get closer and closer to opening, those numbers become more and more accurate. So you can see site acquisition took 14 months, I think it actually took a lot longer than that, but that's as, as long as I've been. But that's as, as long as I've been involved with it. Design, we hope to have it fully designed and tweaked, tweaking that ZMM design by May of 2026. The construction and site development, that's about 19 months. And that should be completed by August of '27. And then right now we're working on our staffing plan. And we are working very quickly to try, hire a CRC manager. And those other two key staff, which will help with the licensure of the facility, help with the SOPs, everything related to running and operating the facility and getting it ready, including recruitment of the other staff. And then we'll obviously have a burn-in period and then we hope, hope to open September of 2027. On the operating side, you know, again, the 50, 54 or so positions potentially, if it's fully ramped up. But the, the good news is that the facility, in many of our services, we get reimbursement. And we get reimbursement through commercial insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, and then their self-pay. We will start to see a stream of reimbursement revenues starting in FY '28. There also is some additional revenue that we will have from VDPHDS. We get an ongoing CRC grant. We also are excited to be able to hire our first three staff with the Department of Justice Mental Health Collaboration Grant, which we partnered with law enforcement on. And those three staff will be funded with that. And then we will likely use some of that existing 10% that you provide each and every year to help operate the facility after we get the facility built. Total expenditures, again, they are what they are per fiscal year. And you'll see the first two years, first three years, there's a gap in funding. But we hope to be able to find additional money and fund balance to be able to offset that or other, other means to be able to offset that first three years. But the difficulty is, once it's fully staffed and once it's fully filled with individuals, then we'll start to see that reimbursement money come to fruition. Again, this is just a simple list of all the partners that we've worked with so far to date on the facility, including our member localities who've been very helpful for us, have really guided us in many different ways, especially your law enforcement and the individuals that you send to our board who've really helped steer this project and get it back on track. So. And I, that's all I have. So be happy for any of us to answer any questions you might have. And thank you again for letting us present tonight.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Sandy or other staff members?
Yeah.
I have a few. Counselor Shepherd?
Yes. First of all, a great presentation and I think it's a, a much needed facility. And I agree, I think it will help alleviate a lot of pressure and time off law enforcement and, and hospitals as well. I was looking at the, the floor plan and I didn't see anything in here that accommodation for two things. One, separation of, of gender, of any type within the facility. If there's accommodation for that and also age of.
It will, it will only serve, it will only serve adults. We're not able to have one facility be able to serve adults and juveniles or children. So.
21.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's 21.
18.
18. And it does, it does not accommodate differences in sex. So it's unlike most of us that have dealt with jails or any facilities like that, even fire stations. You know that there's always separate accommodations, but I don't believe that is required or as a, is a requirement by the Commonwealth.
Anyone else? I have a few questions, but go ahead.
Do you have any estimate of how many people will not have to go to the emergency room as a result of this center coming online? What's the reduction either in terms of number of people going to the emergency room or percent?
Yes. We, we have national data.
Dr. McClanahan, you go to the microphone if you don't mind. Thank you very much. We've got viewers from home that need to hear you.
Absolutely. And Bob may want to talk to, speak to this as well. But in national data, it's 60% fewer is kind of the overall that's over. You're going to still have 40% are going to need to go to the hospital because they're medically fragile or they're just, we can't accommodate them with the things that we have. Or they may have to go to jail. We hope not. But generally speaking, it's about 60% the decrease. Am I correct about that, Bob? You better say yes.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely correct. Augusta Health Business Bar helped us with the Performa and trying to predict the costs and everything else. And what, and there, it was a very conservative one intentionally. So we want to do all that. They were projecting a total peel off of mental health cases that includes involuntary, involuntary. People in crisis go to the emergency room, about a 40% reduction of that. I'm hoping there'd be a whole bunch more than that, but eventually.
So of that particular audience, but the total number of people who go to the emergency room, that's kind of the number that I was looking for.
Yeah, they, they were saying about 40%. They did a study of all the people presenting there from the police as well as volunteer. They all get mixed around, triaging for immediacy of need. They're always put to the bottom of it. That's why they get warehoused in the emergency room and that type of thing. That type of person would be better served at this one stop shop. And then with a lot of public service announcements and other things to allow people, if you're not feeling well, you got a crisis, need someone to talk to, this is the place to go. Including being diverted by the hospital or otherwise. The other side of that is, is that people who are in the emergency room, who are medically cleared and are still going to be civil and voluntary, we can take that TDO away from the hospital so they come out of there as well. And then there are cases that people are going to come in, who are going to need more extensive medical clearance. We would be able to take them over to the hospital. Once medically cleared, per im Thala, can then take the transfer back. So it's, it's really geared to the national average for acute inpatient stays, five to seven days if, depending on the statute you're looking at. And the way it's been going, especially through COVID, people spend five to seven days before they got to the hospital. And so this facility is ostensibly built to handle someone for 15, 23 hours and 59 minutes. So most of them, which should be able to be resolved in that time period, stay in their community and then resolve for the other additional services that are coming with this, which includes community stabilization services, mobile crisis teams, that type of stuff with the, also the advent of Marcus Alert, which is coming up next year. That makes sense.
Yes, sir. I have a, a follow-up question. I don't, not a follow-up question, but a, a sort of a different question. There's going to be an, an office for law enforcement and a courtroom. Which jurist, which locality will be housed in that office?
The courtroom is for the civil and voluntary commitment process that occurs with the judicial team. And a lot of it's to telehealth, but that's the area would happen, much like a general, just a courtroom now. The law enforcement part of this project is, it's like our, it's a crisis intervention CIT thing that we have down at the hospital now. Where we have seven days a week from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM housed, manned by law enforcement officers split between Waynesboro, Stanton and Augusta County. And that's all going to pull out of there and go into here. So they will have officers whose full-time job from Augusta County deputies are going to be there. And then backfilling with vacancies, time off or other things with the same folks in all three jurisdictions who would choose to do this. When we first set up, we were the first CSB in the state to get transfer custody program set up at Augusta Health. And everyone was real gung ho with trying to help people. It was very disheartening, especially through COVID. When it became, lack of better words, it was just, there were stations, there were people just waiting there forever. And this would give them a place to come to, a place to talk to someone, a place to go. So the answer is long short, it's all of them, including the Waynesboro Sheriff's Department.
Stanton's here, yeah. It might show up. And another question is, is this being built with a potential to grow? And what are the models that you all can use throughout the Commonwealth or the country that, that you can emulate?
It can't have more than 16 beds or it becomes an institution of mental disease, like the state hospital. And so Medicaid is not reimbursable there. So this will be as big as it gets in terms of 16 chairs, 16 beds. If we were to, at some time in the future, when we get flush, wanted to do like an adolescent or child unit, it would have to be a different building because they cannot be housed in the same building. It's possible that there would be some expansion in terms of other kinds of offices. But at this time, not in terms of the actual clients who would be there.
Just, or there are models that you were trying to emulate throughout the Commonwealth? Or is this the only one that would be in, in our state?
Arizona Crisis Now model is pretty much the key model nationally. Virginia, for quite some time, way underfunded, mental health treatment for the citizens. And other places have built out of wide, broad crisis continuum services that help people get help before they get into crisis. And what they've shown in those states is that the amount of psychiatric inpatient beds available is far exceeds the demand because the services are being met through this continuum. In Virginia, we're switched. But you get this, there's this, all over Virginia moves to do forms and versions of this. And again, the hope would be for people who need a bed, there'll be beds available because we're decreasing the need for it. But so the model is the Crisis Now model that went up. The DBHDS is funding and promoting a lot of different varieties of, starting with a CRC, which is really 23-hour chairs. They can come in, they got to leave at 23 and 59 minutes, no disposition. The crisis stabilization unit, which is great up to 15 days, but the issue of acuity on a standalone is a big deal. An assessment site center where officers bring them there when they get services. Marcus Alert location for the multiple jurisdictions, mobile crisis in and out, community stabilization working out, and connecting them to services. You put that under one roof, that's the Arizona Now model. So this is.
Yeah, this will be the last question. Sorry, we're running out of time. One more question from counsel, if you don't mind.
So it sounds like this is pretty unique for Virginia. The other thing is, how do people get to the centers? Is it law enforcement primarily or?
In 24/7, involuntary people are brought there. Voluntary people can come in. They'll be met at the door, voluntary. We had that other map. It was, if you remember where the Sallyport was, farther over the right is the front door.
Okay.
Yeah, you see the bottom left corner? That's the Sallyport. And right in the middle of that is the opening of the doors where people can pull in, in the parking lots and come in voluntarily. They have to be let in and they'll be served and assessed on the voluntary side that could end up talking to someone, things are good. Go back home, also let out. They'll, they could be needing a little bit more assistance, need to see the doctors, they might go into the 23-hour for any portion of the 20 hours or lot and taken out. They might need longer than that. That's when they go to the CSU. And then for the people brought in voluntary, the same sort of process. We're going to have drivers there to take people home. They're not going to be walking out of the street. And there's not a bus stop out front yet, but I mean, it's, it's, we're going to be providing transportation most part. And it's going to be like an emergency room. But the mindset for people that they've shown, if you're not feeling well physically, emotionally, anything, you go to the emergency room. And if you've ever been in the emergency rooms, which I have, it is not therapeutic. It's a lengthy stay just for a medical problem. And so this is trying to give people immediate help.
You were asking if this was unique in Virginia. The governor's right help right now, they, has been spent a lot of, there's a lot of money out there that is trying to connect this crisis continuum with this kind of a facility being the missing piece. As we have hospitals, we have what you can do outpatient, but what are you going to do in between? And there are, and Bob probably knows the answer to this better than I, but there are quite a few that are being renovated or there are crisis stabilization units that are adding the 23-hour observations. But we are one of two, I think, that are going to be building from the ground up, which I think is pretty cool because we can really make sure that, you know, all these other places have taken some building, had to gut it, all that sort of thing. So it, it is unique. We're very excited about it as well as scared. Especially with all the stuff going on with Medicaid and all that kind of good stuff. But we, it needs to be done and we are going to soldier on and get it done.
Thank you for all of your work and for coming this evening.
Oh, thank you for inviting us.
And sir, I didn't get your last name Bob. Thank you very much. And Mr. Sandy, thank you for coming. And Dr. McClanahan, it was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now move on to our final work session item, a closed meeting. I will now entertain a motion to enter a closed meeting. Is. Okay.
I moved in our closed meeting for the discussion of an honorary award specifically to the key to the city, the Stanton Award pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A11. And for the Stanton City Council to receive legal advice from the Stanton City Attorney regarding the city clerk position pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A8. And for the discussion of the terms of public contract with the Stanton Downtown Development Association, where discussion in an open meeting could affect the negotiating strategy of the city to Stanton pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A29. And for discussion of the resignation of a specific public officer. The clerk of council pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A1.
Thank you, Counselor, Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Would we like to have him repeat that? Mr. Kessinger, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Park?
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are now in flow session. Hope to see you all back here at 7:00 PM. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to reconvene in an open meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Park.
I move that counsel reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard discussed are considered in the meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Park. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Kessinger, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Overholzer?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Park?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, it's now seven o'clock and I'd like to call the August 14th, 2025 regular meeting of the Stanton City Council to order. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which he stands, one nation, unuttered, God in the invisible, with whom we receive Christ as our own. Good to see all of you this evening. Tonight's invocation comes to us from Councilman Shepherd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have asked a friend, Minister Todd Dunning's from an organization, Nichols and Dimes, a wonderful organization, to come up and share some words. So I would ask Minister Dunning's to come up to the podium and share his inspiration with us.
Greetings, Madam Mayor.
Greetings.
Good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
Yes, it is. And, and welcome to our, thank you so much for this opportunity. And our citizens of Stanton and councilmen and women. This, this honor right here is like, you have no words because I'm one of you guys. So the first thing I think about is I thank God for one more day. We all got one more day and today was that day. And what did we do with today? Today is the only day you can say is promised because you're here right now. Tomorrow is not promised. So with Nichols and Dimes, we help those that are in need. Anyone that might be in need for any type of reason, we do not care what it is. We would do our best to make sure that they're provided the need that they have at that moment. So in our travels, I run into a nine-year-old man and a woman. And they're at the ice cream shop eating ice cream. They've been married for 70-plus years and they're. They've been married for 70-plus years in their holding hands. And as they're eating ice cream, they're not even talking to one another. They're just looking in each other's eyes. So I'm a nosy guy. I go and ask who they are, how they're doing. And I come out of all that to find out that they've been married over 70-plus years, high school sweethearts. And at that moment, from my side out looking in, it looks beautiful. I want that. Anybody would want that in this room. To be married to your high school sweetheart. Married one time, that means you're batting a thousand. That means that you got it going on because there's a few people that can say that I'm 70-plus years in to my high school sweetheart. But outside looking in, it looks great. But I know that through the talk, there was turmoil. Losing kids, first son died early death. Car being repossessed as they're coming forward through their years. And they're arguing with each other all through this. Losing each other's parents, gotta go to funerals, losing jobs along the way. It wasn't pretty at that time. But from my standpoint, it looked beautiful. But one thing they did learn, they learned that they did not need to fight face to face anymore. They did not need to argue over the things that life is throwing at them. So they taught themselves to, to fight back to back. The city of Stanton, 270-plus years old, give or take. The citizens of Stanton, this is your relationship. This is your 270-plus-year relationship. So when I say that, Stanton might come, you might come into this town and it's historic. It looks beautiful. The park is the top-rated park in Virginia, top five at least in my book, number one. We have a lot going on in this town that we can offer. And it looks good from the outside looking in. But as citizens and the, and the city of Stanton, they have this relationship that's always good and bad. We had a flood that almost destroyed our downtown. We had tax cuts and, and, and all these things that are happening. And we're crying about it and we want somebody to do something about it. But a friend of mine, Martine Tobert, he says the best work is community work. We can sit here and call on the council team and the council members and say, hey, we need you to do. But if the community is not standing up, if the community is not doing what they need to do, then it makes the relationship tough. I advise folks, get involved with an organization. Put your hands in something that can make this city better. We want to make the other cities jealous because we got it going on. But it takes a community. My mother was a first grade teacher out of Rocky Mount, North Carolina, came up during the segregation times, didn't know who she was going to live with when she got here. But when she got here, she found out that she was by herself. She taught first grade over on Johnson Street. They moved her to Bestywell when integration happened. I would come home from school and elementary school and middle school, I'd come home and find three kids at my kitchen table. She's tutoring these kids even after a six, seven, eight hour day. How did they get there? She brought them there. How did they get home? She took each one of them home. And during all of that, she's cooking dinner. Community work is the best work. Growing up, my church and the churches around me didn't know what in the neighborhood needed of anything because they took care of it. If Ms. Johnson's grass needed to be cut, Deacon Jones would do it. If somebody's bill needed to be paid, they would take care of that too. Because community work is the best work. We can sit here today and we can always say that there's something wrong going on and will always find fault because it's a relationship. This is what relationships do. But I charge you today. Let's do something different. Let's do something different. If there's a problem or an issue in this community, look upon yourselves as citizens to take care of it and do what you can. Because I, I promise you, the councilmen and women right here in front of you, their pillow, they lay their head on their pillow, which is our problems. They go to bed thinking, wow, how can I fix that? They wake up in the morning, they put their clothes on, they're still thinking about what we are saying. But community work is the best work. We're not too old to do something. We're not too old to do something. We're not too old to do something. Remember, community work is the best work. Father God, I love you and I praise you. And I want you to come into this meeting on tonight and have your way. Whatever you need to put into it, the spirit of those that are under the sound of my voice. Impart on them, Father God, what it is that each one of us need to do. We're here for you, Father God. And my question is, what can I do? Because community work, Father God, is the best work. Thank you so much for your time and attention. And I pray that we can go forward as a family, fighting back to back and not face to face.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Todd.
Thank you.
That was a powerful message. Thank you, sir. Just going to give that a second. Before I give my mayor's report, I want to welcome some folks into the room as well. I want, always want to appreciate Sheriff Hartless and Deputy Sheriff McFarland for always coming to our meetings. I appreciate the support. I see Chief Ball back there, a fire chief, keeping us safe in our community, doing what he can to keep us all safe. So thank you and to the many staff in this room as well. Glad you're in here tonight. So this past couple of weeks, I've attended many meetings, several of which were about some federal cuts that are coming down the road and how that will be affecting localities and our residents. So I'm just trying to keep myself informed about those changes, particularly at the hospital with Medicaid, with other clinics and Medicaid reimbursements, how that might impact folks who will be getting sicker because if they lose their insurance, they will put off treatment. So just wanting to be very aware of that. And also went to a meeting sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce that allowed nonprofits in the area to speak about their cuts to their budget and how they will also be having to pay, to cut back on some of their services to some of our most vulnerable. So just trying to be mindful, informed, so that we can plan on how to take care of the gaps that may be existing. There's an organization, if you're not aware, called the Virginia Program for Aging Services. The, the state of Virginia runs agencies for our older community. And I do attend monthly meetings as often as I can. And the last month was about an initiative called Dementia Friendly Valley. And essentially, V-Pass is offering, out of their offices in Weansboro, training, workshops, awareness around dementia, its causes, how to help caregivers, offering respite care. And they are hoping to spread the word because they're hoping to have businesses become dementia-friendly businesses, schools to become dementia-friendly schools, even local governments to become dementia-friendly spaces so that we're aware of folks who are dealing with this. And we can make our spaces, our words, our, our visible print easier to navigate for, for a population who is, is struggling with that. And so I have a flyer that I have taped up under the, under that framed picture toward the exit. If you want to learn more about that initiative, go ahead and take a picture of it. I only have one. So if you'll take a picture of that and get in touch with the folks in Weansboro, please do. I just want to say one more thing. You may have heard there is going to be a renaming dedication at the Woodrow Wilson Birthplace on Tuesday, the 19th, at 10:00 a.m. I think it's exciting and I'm going to go. Martha H. Hancock Foundation is going to sponsor the renaming dedication celebration at the, at the birthplace. And the, the gift shop will be renamed for her. And she was the instigator and the founder of the, of the birthplace. And they will honor her 100 years later with, with this renaming. So in case anyone is interested, please attend. Anything, any other comments from members of council?
With several councilmembers recently, the groundbreaking for the new Gypsy Hill Pool House. It was really exciting to see work get started on that. It's supposed to be ready by swim season next summer. I expect some disruption in the park. Probably our city manager may have something to say about that. Also Habitat for Humanity recently celebrated having a, welcoming a new director, Brad Bryan. I'm real excited to see him take the helm and, and to see the energy that he's going to bring to that role and helping address our housing, housing crisis. The, I'm liaison to the Economic Development Authority and they are working on revisions to the enterprise zone. That's going to be presented to council soon. There are going to be some new incentives for new and existing businesses that remodel, that make investments to improve and enhance their businesses. And the, the geographic area that that applies to is, is going to be expanded. So looking forward and excited about that. And I just, to piggyback with what Pastor Todd was saying, I serve on a nominating committee for the advisory committees for the city. And we have over a dozen committees that are all staffed by, by citizens, by you. And that is a great way for you to step up in areas of expertise or interest, whether it's the environment, sidewalks and pedestrian access. Their, their economic development, there are many areas of potential involvement. And I urge people to step up and apply for those advisory committees. It's a great way to serve.
Thank you, Councilor Overhold, Sir.
Madam Mayor. Just like to share, I was able to attend the August 11th School Board meeting this past Monday. I know at the last city council meeting, you all were introduced to our new superintendent, Dr. Iseri. I was participating remotely at that meeting. So it was great to talk to him again in person and hear his 100-day entry plan presentation to the school board with a real focus on listening and learning. I think that along with his previous professional experience with family and community engagement and outreach from a school standpoint. I'm really excited to see what he brings and I look forward to working with him moving forward. Also shared at the school board meeting was information on River Ridge Learning Center, which is a new regional public education facility within our area, serving Stanton, Augusta County and Weansboro, focused on high school education, public high school education for students with substance abuse. Sounds like a, you know, just a great addition to our regional in terms of that type of need. And between that and just getting the update during our work session on the crisis receiving center, I just, there's a lot of positive movement in that area for, for our region. And then lastly, it sounds like the return to school has been a success. I don't know if I, my kids would say that, but. Everything seems to be going smoothly, especially transportation, which I guess this is the best schedule the school buses have kept in the first week for return. So.
Thank you, Councilor Campbell. Any other remarks before we move on? All righty then, we'll go on to item A, the consent agenda. Per Procedure Bannorandum Number 14, it's the policy of city council to have routine, non-controversial items placed on a consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. If separate discussion of an item is requested by any member of council, that item shall be removed and considered separately at the end of the regular meeting agenda. Do any council members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda to be placed at the end of the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Much, Councilor Park. Any further discussion? Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item B, consideration of an amendment to the city of Stanton's capital improvement plan, FY 26 to 30, Ms. Beauregard.
Moyers is here this evening to walk through this item. And it's quite a bit. We're doing the amendment and then several updates on the capital budget.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with an update to our five-year CIP plan.
Welcome, Ms. Moyers.
So in the five-year plan that was approved by the Planning Commission, we did have two North Augusta Street sidewalk projects and an Edgewood sidewalk projects, project that were scheduled to be funded with VDOT smart scale funding and administered locally. Unfortunately, the updated cost estimates for those three projects were significantly higher than when they were first awarded. So the city had to make a tough decision to cancel the two North Augusta Street sidewalk projects and put that funding toward the Edgewood Sidewalk Project. VDOT had indicated if no action was taken, then we would lose the 3.6 allocated for the Augusta Sidewalk Projects. So the five-year capital plan that was approved by the city council on April 24th did not have those two North Augusta Street sidewalk projects because they had been canceled. Before you tonight is a revised five-year capital plan to add in a project labeled CD 2901. It can be found on page, I believe it's 106 of the agenda packet. And that is the Augusta Street Sidewalk Projects for the design and construction of new sidewalk and pedestrian access improvements along North Augusta Street from Lambert Street to Harper Court with pedestrian improvements to the existing sidewalk at Augusta Street and Terry Street. The city plans to apply, the city plans to apply for VDOT revenue sharing funds to help with 50% of the cost of the project. Having this project in the CIP will help the city in receiving those grant funds. As you can see on the project sheet, the design is estimated to cost almost $850,000 and is scheduled for FY 2029. Construction is scheduled for the following fiscal year with an estimated cost of about 3.4 million. Please keep in mind, these are the initial costs that were used with the pre-application for the revenue sharing grant. VDOT is looking at the cost, so it could change as we submit the final application September 15th. The city's local match for the grant would be funded using capital reserves, primarily the new sidewalk reserve. There were several pages in the capital plan that were affected by the new project. Those updated pages can be found on 50, page 55 through 57 of the agenda packet. That is just including it on our general fund summary. A public hearing was held at the July 17th Planning Commission meeting. And the Planning Commission did approve the updated five-year CIP. So I want to pause there before I move on to the other two updates I have to see if you have any questions.
Ms. Moyers, this might be a better question for Mr. Rhodes, but I, I know the background of where the idea for the Edgewood Sidewalk came from. But is there a background for the Augusta Street sidewalk? Or is it, I know there, there's segments of existing sidewalk sporadically along that corridor. So is it just a matter of filling in the gaps to complete that network? Or is there a different backstory for this one?
I do not know the backstory. Do you, Ronnie? That predates me.
Councilor Campbell, I'm not sure that there is a backstory to this. This was an area that was noted seven years ago that really could benefit from a sidewalk for this residents in that part of the city. And of course, I'm tying into the commercial there and to downtown. And we just thought that we should go ahead and apply for revenue sharing this cycle, that this was a worthy project, although we didn't have the funding through smart scale to complete it. But we thought this was a good step to at least get half the funding for the project.
Thank you.
I understand that sidewalk is part of this project, but not bike path. And, and could you say a little bit about, about why? I know we're trying to include shared use and bike paths wherever we can. I assume it has something to do with the right-of-way available.
We will probably need to obtain some right-of-way in order to construct sidewalks in this area. This was first and foremost a sidewalk project. It wasn't a multimodal project. It wasn't a multimodal project to include other forms of transported, means of transportation on that road. I'm not sure what else I can say about that.
If I recall, I think the plan for Augusta Street from our bike ped plan is shared, the shared markings are wide shoulders along Augusta Street for the bike, from a bike facility.
I trust your memory better than mine on that.
And this, this idea, of course, predates the bike ped plan if it's seven years ago.
Thank you. It does. It does.
Any other questions for Ms. Moiers or Mr. Rhodes?
I would like to know, when, do you know when the sidewalks will be going out for bid? Is that, are we, how far off are we for anything like that? I'm just so worried about actual costs. I don't have the information from me, but I believe we're looking at five years out, like 2030 before we go out to bid. There is in this estimate additional funding for those increases. Of course, if we had in the past with the pandemic, which, you know, made those estimates. Yeah, yeah. But hopefully, we don't have something that major. But there is a inflation factor into these numbers. And like I said, this is just the initial estimate. Ms. Moiers noted that, that we use in the pre-application that was due a couple of months ago. Today, they opened the window for the final, the full application. These numbers will probably change for the full application. I will be coming back before you, before we submit that application on September 15. I believe you have two more council meetings before then with a draft resolution of support for the application so that we have more details at that time.
Terrific. Thank you so much, Mr. Rhodes.
So moving on to the next part of this agenda item, I wanted to take this opportunity to update council on two projects that are in the five-year CIP. As you are aware, the city applied for a build grant for the Union Town area. That build grant stands for Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development. This grant would have helped the city to fund reconstruction of National Avenue south of the railroad, a new pedestrian bicycle bridge at National Avenue, a shared use path on Richmond Avenue, and street repaving for Anthony Young, Jones, Patton, and National, and a comprehensive reconnection and replacement of underground water and the addition of new sanitary sewer utility mains in Union Town. So unfortunately, staff was informed mid-July that the city was not selected for this grant. We did want to let council know that we're still moving forward with the water and sewer infrastructure improvements that are in the current five-year CIP plan. The five-year plan shows design starting in FY 26 and construction in FY 28. The city will be engaging Timmins. Timmins is the same company that is wrapping up the surveys in Union Town to prepare the preliminary engineering report. And we hope to have them under contract within the next couple of weeks by the end of August. So funding for the water and sewer improvements will come out of the water and sewer fund balances. There is some concern based on estimates received earlier this year that was used in the grant application, that there will not be enough sewer fund balance to support the entire project. Staff will reevaluate the fund balance once the 2025 audit is complete and we present the updated CIP next year. One last item that I wanted to update you on are the park bathrooms, Montgomery Hall Pool, Pool House, Montgomery Hall Park Pool House, and the Gypsy Hill Park Pump House. If you remember, we did go out to bid with the Gypsy Hill Park Bathroom Improvement Project, but we had to shelve it because the bids came in higher than what we had allowed for the budget. We hope to combine the three projects into one bid package and go out to bid later this fiscal year. However, we now need to update the plans to meet our current building code. We would also like to explore the possibility of putting a bathroom near the dog park in the skate park area. Since we don't have one in that area, we utilize a porta potty. It's proven a little difficult because it is in the floodplain. So we're still evaluating whether that's going to be a possibility or not. So work continues on that. And that is all the updates I had for you. Do you have any additional questions?
Just a few more clarifications on the water sewer extensions. So there's $375,000 each for design for this fiscal year that we hope to get started with Timmins Group. Through that design process, we'll know, we'll have a much final, more finalized construction estimate once the construction plans are done. You said it was the sewer that we think might not have enough from a construction standpoint? Okay. So it's three point, just for everyone, 3.75 for each.
And the contract that we are getting underway by the end of August is the preliminary engineering report, which is about 55,000, split equally between water and sewer, and then we'll move into design.
Has Timmins given indication of design schedule yet? Just what the, how long the process will be?
No, I'm not aware of that. Lyle probably knows that information.
I know we all want to move forward with that as fast as possible. I'm glad to hear water is fully funded. It would be, I don't know, I'm looking forward to more once we get the actual design and they're getting more accurate numbers.
To complete design? Yeah, Rodney was saying that design should take about a year and a half for the complete design work.
So you said the design work would go through 26 and then construction would start in?
It relates to 28.
Just the design. I'm sorry. Okay.
Yes.
And then construction would start at that point?
Mm-hmm. Construction would start as soon as design is done.
So we're looking at 2028, 2029?
2028.
Fiscal.
To start. Right.
And that's, I mean, that's why.
Rodney, why don't you just stand there?
That's why I wanted to keep this pushing.
Yeah, yeah, right.
It's time to do these design plans.
Yeah.
Just for clarification for those in the audience.
Yeah.
Fiscal year 2028 starts July 1 of 27. So roughly two years from now.
Any other questions for Ms. Moiers?
No. Thank you very much, Jesse. Thank you so much.
Oh, do you need to, do I need to, I see if we did the motion for the CIP?
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that city council approve the resolution adopting an amendment to the City of Stanton's Capital Improvement Plan, fiscal year 2026 through 2030, as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Overholtz, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Woods, has there any further discussion? Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So moving on to item C, consideration of an ordinance to authorize the Stanton subdivision agent to approve subdivision plats. Ms. Beauregard, oh, good evening, Mr. Blair. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor Edwards and council. This is what I would term a housekeeping matter from this past session of the Virginia General Assembly. Before the assembly met this year, a subdivision plat could be approved by a locality subdivision agent, its planning commission or governing body. In an effort to stimulate housing growth and to make the process a little more streamlined, this year, the General Assembly passed a bill, Senate Bill 974, that the subdivision agent is now who will have the final say on plat approval rather than a planning commission and/or governing body. The ordinance before you makes that change to comply with the state law. It amends parts of Chapter 17.10 of the Stanton City Code. And the subdivision agent will now approve all final plats. Assuming that this change is enacted, before this change, the subdivision agent was only allowed to unilaterally act on what are called minor subdivision plats, which were divisions of three lots or fewer or a boundary line adjustment. So I'm happy to take any questions.
All righty, well, entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, I move that city council approve the ordinance amending Chapter 17.10 of the Stanton City Code as presented.
Is there a second? Thank you, Councilor Parks. Any further discussion? Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving to item D, consideration of use of city council contingency funds for certain nonprofit agencies. Ms. Beauregard, do you explain, introduce this item?
Sure. I'm happy to do that. So this is continuing the conversation you all started, well, during the budget process, but then you had a work session item on this at your May 22 session where you discussed the use of your, of city council's contingency account, which is $50,000 that wasn't used at all during FY 25. We're now in FY 26, but you still are able to allocate funds out of this pool for, for your purpose that you deem necessary. The agencies that were discussed were the ones that weren't funded as new agencies as part of the FY 26 budget. And so those include the Arrow Project, New Directions YMCA, and the Shenandoah Valley Small Business Development. Warm was also included, but that discussion has kind of pivoted towards the Day Center discussion that will be opening up sometime this fall, I believe, and to have some support go towards that. So, and that was for $30,000. So we took the liberty of kind of re, kind of re, just restating the discussion that you had on May 22. But again, you all can, this is your contingency fund. As long as the funding is going towards a 501(c)(3), there are really no limitations to this necessarily. And you can do something with it tonight or nothing with it tonight and tackle it another day, and that's fine, too. So, and we're, and Ms. Moiers is here also to answer any questions you have. So we're, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Yes, again, I asked Ms. Beauregard to put this on the agenda. I felt like we needed to continue the discussion and think about allocating some of these funds, at least to some of the nonprofits that we talked about in the fall who applied for initial funding. I wanted to give a short update on where the Day Center is right now. I was able to meet with the First Presbyterian pastor yesterday, their ministry team, the Mary Baldwin University's president, Dr. Stein, Dr. Jurick, who is in charge, the staff in charge of their safety and security on campus, as well as a social work professor, and Alec Gunn, who is the executive director of the Warm Shelter in Waynesboro. And I was invited as a member of council. And so essentially, they are ready to start as soon as September. The only thing that they're waiting on is to ensure that they'll have enough funding to begin the shelter. They're going to need to have that to sign a lease at the church. They'll be renting a single room with bathrooms. And they will have two staff three days a week. And that will be all business hours. And the days that they're not doing that, the staff will be doing outreach, street outreach. So it's very much going to benefit the Stanton community in a lot of ways and benefit the folks who are homeless right now. And they will also be served with a resource navigation with the Embrace program and their community assistance network connecting folks who come into the center with, with housing resources, with medical resources, with, with getting disability, with whatever it is that they need. That, that assistance will be there. Speaking of Brad Bryant at Habitat, he has built himself a portable, a mobile shower unit, and that will pull into the parking lot there at First Presbyterian. The Doc, Isaac Azillo is in charge of the mobile medical clinic at Augusta Health. And they are scheduled to come to the Day Center twice a week, which I sense a lot, but it's fantastic. Mary Baldwin was even thinking that some of their students might be able to take advantage of that. And so throughout that, throughout that meeting, Mary Baldwin was very much interested in how the students and faculty and staff could participate in ensuring that that is a, a productive, viable, thriving center. And so I present that to you tonight. It has been something that has been ongoing discussion for about a year and a half. And I just, I'm glad to give you that update this evening. Warm also runs the thermal, the thermal shelter throughout the winter. And so, so having that presence here already, they have relationships with a lot of the churches here in town. You're all familiar with them. They have relationships with PD and now have made relationships with our city staff. And, and so I look forward to hearing what you would think about allocating funds sooner than later to that program.
What, what's the timeline for opening?
September.
September, so right away.
Ready.
I, to me, that sounds like kind of an urgent need and something we've all been pressed interest in getting going. So I personally would love to support that one in particular. The other organizations on this list are certainly deserving. This contingency fund was originally brought into being so that we can more effectively respond in the moment to emergencies locally. And, and you know, this would extinguish that fund entirely, this, this list, without replenishing next year. So it depends, you know, is this something that we want to have still? Or is it not? I mean, you know, because I can see arguments both ways. This has produced kind of a strange sweepstakes feeling to it for that in which we have to be put in a position. We're looking at it like this to say who, which organizations are getting this funding? Now Warm, we're directly partnering with for, for one of our specific goals. So it's, do we, do we feel a need to allocate everything right now?
I'd like to add to what you just said. We, when Ms. Joyce presented her housing strategy, and I was talking about, and I presented the, all of the steps that have been building up toward having a day shelter, a day center. The idea is that this is part of, of the spectrum of the housing strategy. And so we do have a housing strategy. We are going to have a housing commission, and I see this as, as part of that.
Absolutely.
As part of that spectrum, fitting into that. So.
Um, I personally, I am, I definitely want to support the Day Center. I'm not ready to move on it right this moment with no, I feel like we need some kind of, I would like to see a proposal, like actually in writing, what the money would be allocated to. As far as like for the Day Center for Stanton, absolutely. As far as the rest, I, I do feel like it's just kind of, I like the idea of having a contingency fund in case of emergency. And I don't think, I mean, while again, these are all definitely deserving agencies and are doing a ton of good work, I would, I would feel more comfortable put in the position we are to safeguard this, given the state of affairs today, that we have some of this to respond to an emergency if, you know, like given a bigger one. A lot of agencies being on the capstone board and speaking with the nonprofits, so many are losing money and funding, and I get that. But I mean, maybe I'm just being pessimist. I'm afraid it's going to get worse. And I would like to have a little bit of a safety net to have on hand in case we've, you know, to respond to something quickly if we need to. So I would like to see like a formal, just more like a proposal. So I would like to see like a formal, just more like a proposal, something so I have a better understanding about the Day Center. But I'm totally in support of like allocating funds to the Day Center as soon as possible to, to get this up and going. I just haven't seen anything.
Oh, Councilmember Parks, so in conversations that we were having about the Warm, the Day, the Day Center, so when it was presented, we talked about funding it not out of the contingency. So that was our first talks. It would be, like you said, part of the housing strategy, and that money would come from somewhere else. So I want to bring the somewhere else up today so that we can see how we can better utilize the thirty thousand to give that as Mayor Edwards said, it would be a startup for the Day Center since that is a project that we would want to do. I just had a conversation with Ms. Beauregard, she said that Jesse's on board, I mean, she's here to answer the questions about what can we do with the thirty thousand to bring that out of the fifty thousand, but actually not actually for, per se, coming out of the contingency, but we can use it now and then reimburse ourselves as
Ms. Moyers, could you?
Giving the thirty thousand back later.
So the conversation Ms. Moyers and I had, and I'll just, was, you were, if you're looking for another source, the only other source is carryover, and typically those funds aren't appropriated till January. So there is a timing issue, but I'll let Ms. Moyers.
Yes, there's nothing in our FY twenty six operating budget that could cover this. But we do have, we will have carryover funds because we're going to real estate tax assessment increase. But those funds are typically appropriated once the audit is done and presented to you in December. So it would come back on a budget amendment in January to be adopted on the following meeting in usually February.
Both projected opening in September, that's a bit late.
So if we could utilize the thirty thousand dollars out of the fifty thousand now, will we be able to reimburse us back?
I'll fill it back in.
Build it back in the contingency with the carryover?
Technically, yes.
Yes, so if we can, technically, yes. So that's, I'm going on a yes with that.
You would, you would appropriate thirty thousand dollars from the carryover into a council discretionary fund in the FY twenty six budget?
Right, so then with that being said, we can go ahead and allocate some funds to these organizations that request it, knowing that in January, February, we can get thirty thousand back to go into it and that we didn't spend it all. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I hear about the thirty thousand for the Day Center, but did you say we could also fund the other ones, too?
Yes.
But, yeah, if we
If we spent the whole fifty?
Yes.
Take more out of carryover, but, but then we're, we're also talking about fixing the warf and
So then, yeah, so you're saying allocate all fifty, and then in January, putting it in, either bringing it out of carryover or just adding it into the next budget?
Adding it back into our contingency from the carryover.
Just creating a, an annual contingency.
Right, because actually, we don't have one for next year. It wasn't in there.
Right.
But when we talked about the thirty thousand, because actually Warm asked for twenty six thousand for the Warm Shelter. Somehow or another, that's disappeared off of here, and now we're seeing just the thirty thousand for the Day Center. So the Day Center is our project that we want to do.
Are you referring, you're talking about when they've applied in, in November?
Yeah, they applied, they, yeah.
Their original application?
Was for twenty six thousand, yeah.
And that was, I think, for the, the thermal shelter?
Yes.
Right, and I think we amended it to be for the Day Shelter.
Yeah, it was a separate, different project.
Right, it's two projects, but the ones
It's two, yeah, it is.
Right, it is two different separations. We have to separate that, and the Day Center would be the project that we want to help them with because
Yeah, I hear you.
That's what we want to do, but
Yeah.
I mean, that's a discussion that we have to come up with and agree on. So do we want to put this on hold and
I don't want to put it on hold. I would like to have a vote, but I can't make a motion.
I'm not voting, no.
I mean, I understand what Council, Councilperson Parks was talking about with looking for specifics for Warm, you know, for that. But by next meeting, I mean, will, will that be too
That's fine. I mean, yeah.
I mean, you know, if they can, if they can do that, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm all for more specifics on that.
You can ask them if they can come on August twenty eighth to present to you all a proposal for the thirty thousand for the Day Center.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for the thirty thousand for that. I, I like to see specifics on that.
Yeah, sure.
With that, I voice that. The other part, I'm, again, all worthy causes, but.
Well, yeah, I think the Day, a Day Center is, I mean, there's no doubt that it's an immediate and critical need. But I agree, seeing some specifics, if there's a, if there's a draft operating budget, just to see what it looks like in terms of expectations. I would be a little hesitant to spend all of these contingencies because this contingency has only been ever set once, and it's been carried over year after year after year.
No.
No, we only had it one time.
Well, I mean, it's only been, it's only, we've never refilled it.
We have, we've never used it.
We've never used it.
Never refilled it. So I would, I, I don't want to get into a scenario where it becomes another annual line item.
Right.
It's, it's, it's meant for addressing critical needs, which I think the Day Center fits that box, obviously, but
Yeah.
Okay. So far, what we have decided is that we will invite the executive director of Warm to present at our next meeting with a plan and a budget for how the allocation will be, will be used from the city. That's all we have decided on so far.
Yeah, my, my thought is, I completely agree with what you presented in terms of the outline of the, of the Day Shelter and how it would be run. It's fantastic, the work that you've done lining up these partners and the commitments. But to get some kind of memorandum of understanding in, in writing, outlining the responsibilities with a timeline to start in September, and assuming, are they saying that the thirty thousand will be enough to let them go ahead and start operating the center? Yeah?
It's seed money. This isn't like an annual, like, request and, but to get
One thing that pops to mind, is there an issue with city code and having a mobile shower in the parking lot?
They've been working with community development on this, so they're fully in the loop.
Good.
Oh, yes, sir.
Good. The, the other, the piece that I would support doing, I would go ahead and support doing sooner rather than later, even now, is the Shenandoah Valley Small Business Development because there's kind of a multiplier effect. They would work directly with our, the city economic development staff as an extension of the city's economic development. So I think the return that we would get from that in terms of generating new business, support for business, and providing a kind of an adjunct to the economic development function in the city, I think that is, that is a very good investment.
I would, it sounds like we're pretty far from resolution on, on all of this, and we, we, most of us seem to be in agreement that we want more specifics from, from Warm for how they would use that thirty. So I would personally, I'd present the idea of tabling this till our next meeting when we get specifics from Warm, and we can have a chance to dig into these other ones a little bit more.
And to give five thousand dollars to each, was that set in stone? That wasn't really set in
Not at all.
No, 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 this was just a
It was just a proposal. These were just the organizations that didn't get funding.
We wouldn't be spending it all if we cut something in half to give to somebody else. I mean, we're still not talking about spending it all. I mean, but we do want to be able to help because they came and asked us for help. So we want to be able to help just a little bit to help them out.
Okay.
Is five thousand dollars set in stone? No. Could we cut it in half? Possibility. Could we pick and choose which ones we want to give to? Yeah.
So more, more day asks because they saw cuts and they, they needed money.
Right.
They lost United Way funding
Yes.
And other, other cuts.
Well, we also don't know the current status because another United Way has taken over this, this area as well. So I don't, I personally don't know the status of what's, what's happened with all of that.
But we did get an email today, if, I read the email today, so that's why I'm saying five thousand dollars isn't, you know, set, set amount.
Right.
We can go lower than five thousand dollars and still have, still have some left over to carry for us next year, so, yeah.
Okay, well, I would, I would move to table this till next time, when we get more specifics from Warm, and then we can determine more what, what we want to do with, with the rest, if we want to do anything with the rest right now.
A second.
There was a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kessinger. Our final item is a consideration of re-adoption of city operations under current emergency operations plan. All right, Ms. Beauregard.
Our fire and rescue chief, Jason Ball, will walk through this item and answer any questions you have.
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
So the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Emergency Operations Plan, each locality was notified last week from VDM that our plan had expired. So we were on the phone calls, we were told along with the expiration comes the possibility of not being reimbursed for disasters and grant funding. So that really threw a red flag up. So we called, I've been in touch with our chief regional coordinator, Gene Stewart, and he said that is absolutely not the case. So we don't know where the breakdown in communication with that was, but anyway, the emergency operations plan is a four-year plan through the state, and it just, the state code just says it needs to be reviewed every four years. There's no getting in trouble if you don't do it, and there's no funding attached to it. The grant funding comes from the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is currently in review. It's on the five-year cycle. Sharon Angle and I have been going to those, so there are mitigation plans in fact, in place which allow us to get grant funding. Augusta County did their resolution last night to re-adopt the plan. Waynesboro is September eighth, and they're going to do the same. We're going through the Planning District. They have offered to assist with updating and reviewing the EOP. They have, there's an agreement in place. They've sent all three jurisdictions to sign, and that will be done by January thirty first of twenty twenty six, and then I will bring it back in front of you for adoption.
Thank you, Chief Ball. Is there any questions from council?
Plan, sounds like a plan.
Sounds like you got it under control. Is there anything we need to, is there, would anyone like to make a motion?
Uh, Mayor Edwards.
Yes, Councilwoman Woods.
I move that City Council approve the resolution re-adopting city operations under the current emergency operations plan until a revised version is adopted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion before we vote? Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And that takes us on to matters from the city manager.
I only have two items this evening. One is that City Council will meet on Saturday at nine o'clock at the Art Center, Street, on the second floor conference room to kind of, to finish up your work on the strategic plan. And this is Kylie Kessinger's last meeting with us, the clerk of council over here. He is leaving to join the city of Richmond, so we'll miss him very much seeing his face over there. So I just wanted, I just had to say something, Kylie, sorry. I'm sorry, I embarrassed you just now.
That's okay.
But we will miss him a lot, and I'm not sure, you know, how we're going to go on, but we will somehow. But I'm just very proud of Kylie, and I'm very proud of Kylie and, and what he'll be doing next, so.
Yeah.
But thank you for everything that you've done, and
Thank you for everything, Kylie. You are a beloved member of this.
Oh, and he's been here since twenty twenty two.
Yeah, you missed.
Since twenty twenty two. Very much missed. So thank you for everything. I think we need to give him a round of applause.
I'm just very happy to, to have worked with you. Wonderful. Well, now is the final part of the City Council's agenda entitled Matters from the Public. And it's a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online on the city of Stanton's website. You are asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. As a reminder, this is a time for the City Council to listen. If you would like an answer to a question or a follow-up to your comment, please speak with the city manager, Leslie Beauregard, after the meeting. Good evening, welcome.
Constance Burge, three one nine Mary Gray Lane. I must have misheard. I knew that there was a Day Center in the works, and I approve, and I know that council is in favor of that. It sounded to me like it was going to be at First Presbyterian Church. I know you can't answer questions, and there would be a portable shower. First Presbyterian does not have a parking lot. People park on both sides of Frederick Street on Sunday. Now, there is that parking lot that we at one time considered for the domestic court, which is now out on West Beverly, but I just, just in jail without information. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessinger, do we have any hands raised?
We have no hands raised on Zoom.
Good evening, how are you?
Well, I guess I'm okay. You already started the clock. I'm Dr. Mary Miller, four seventy-one Albemarle Avenue. I have ten minutes of material, and you already started the clock.
Speak double time, Mary.
Don't listen to Michelle.
So I'm going to present information from an article from The New Yorker from June, but I am presenting it tonight because this is the week of law and order. There are those who say no as an automatic response to new ideas. It is a protective mechanism, but if they become informed, analyze the data, and think they may solve problems. For instance, there may have been times when you met someone and immediately took a disliking to them. That's fast thinking. Comes from a book by Daniel Kahneman, who won a Nobel Prize in Economics. Then in social circumstances, you have conversations with the same person. You learn many values and ideas you have in common with them and actually respect and like them. That's slow thinking. These ways of reacting can be applied to acts of violence and the traditional response. Expressive violence, fast, automatic, intuitive, no plan, no purpose. Someone which disrespects you, you lose your temper, you strike out. It's aimed at hurting someone, not getting something tangible. A sudden burst of anger or frustration, adrenaline, causes a catastrophic action. Seventy-seven percent of murders result from expressive violence. In Chicago, it is estimated that arguments are behind seventy to eighty percent of murders. Ninety percent of murders are caused because of emotionally charged disputes, such as eruptions rooted in I'm right and you're wrong. Behavior driving most murders is volatile, aroused, explosive, unpredictable. Expressive, you can't think straight. The wires are overwhelmed. We can decrease expressive violence if we understand the mind of the violent offender. Instrumental violence, on the other hand, is slow, effortful, analytical, planned, a means to a larger end, a tangible goal, such as A means to a larger end, a tangible goal such as robbing a store to get money for rent. Violence is a mean to a larger reward. We need to aim our criminal justice system from punishing explosive, uh, impulsive violence to teaching de-escalation. Teach how to navigate potentially volatile encounters. In the past, it was a prevailing view that gun violence was a product of poverty, racism, and despair. Then, research showed crime was hyper-concentrated when lawns, uh, it was concentrated at a handful of city blocks, not people, but place. In Philadelphia, a thousand vacant lots were cleaned up, weeds cleared, trash picked up, lawns planted. Results, gun violence decreased by 29%. When lawns are mowed one to two times a year, people came outside, their eyes were on the street, and violence decreased. It's not how many the police frisk and arrest. It's, um, this was done in New York City and during that time, actually, violence was down. It's how many arguments are disrupted or diffused. Diffuse, de-escalate, make situations less potent, tense, volatile, harmful. Prisoners do not occupy a distinct moral category. Their actions taste like in a moment. Long-term sentences are not instrumental, are not for instrumental violence. There's no rehab. Uh, treat people to calm them down. They can learn to control their anger, their instant reactions. Make neighborhoods safer with lighting lawns, gardens, and picking up trash. Behavior modification. Teach ways to navigate volatile situations. Increase awareness to people known to start fights, bully, incite, anger. Teach ways to de-escalate. Nerves wire where they fire. So if we fire to think before we explode, we can be cut, it can become a learned pattern behavior. That is, if we fire often enough, it will become wired. I hope this encourages you to think about yourselves, your families, your communities, your schools, and the criminal justice system. I just want to say that, um, I observed two instances with the Stanton police. One was in the park and one was by the busing and, um, I think the two people, they were different situations, different years, um, had mental problems because they were loud and they were disrupting and one was, um.
Mary, can you finish this real?
Yeah, I can. Yeah. Uh, getting into vehicles and the Stanton police de-escalated and nobody was hurt. There was no violence. And so I think you have some, something to be proud of here. Thank you.
We all have something to be proud of then. Yeah. Thank you so much, Mary. It's always good to hear from you. Mr. Kessker, do we have anyone online with their hand raised?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, caller, can you hear us? Are you there?
Yes, I can hear you. This is Brenda Mead. Can you hear me? This Brenda Mead, can you hear me?
I think you might be on mute.
I think I unmuted myself.
No, I think you may be on mute. Um, Kylie, is, uh?
Don't appear to be muted, but.
Um. Uh. There's nothing on your end, Kylie, that's. I, I s- we still can't hear you? Oh, she.
This is, this is. I'm still there.
Um, can you try your mute button again?
Uh, I'm not on mute.
Oh.
Says she's not on mute.
Pox didn't said they can hear them on the Zoom platform.
Maybe, maybe hang up and call back?
I think, could you try to say something one more time?
Try again? Oh, okay, we can hear you now.
Okay, this is Brenda Mead. There are a few things I'd like to mention today. First of all, I'd like to thank Kylie Kessker, Kessker. Um, I, and, and wish him absolute best in Richmond. I think you're, you'd be a lot happier in Stanton, but if you have to go, you have to go. So thank you very much. Uh, second, um, five years ago, my son was in a mental health crisis and he was suicidal. Um, he had to be transported to Petersburg on a temporary restraining order. And so I very much support having a local crisis receiving center and I'm, I really appreciate the fact that the city is supporting that. Um, I'd also like to say that, um, regarding the $30,000, uh, to, $30,000 for Warm, my question is, is it sustainable? If this is seed money, can Warm actually continue to support itself in, in, in future years? And I appreciate the fact that, that Counselor Parks, um, is looking for more details about that request. And then finally, I'm disappointed still that, um, that in spite of the fact that you've had a meeting with Ben Klein, that no one has mentioned anything about it. And it makes me curious about why, uh, why there's such secrecy around that meeting. And so I hope, uh, to see the results of my FOIA request, uh, with notes and emails regarding the meeting and, um, and I, but I really think it would improve transparency if you all would at least talk about, uh, talk about your meeting with Ben Klein. And finally, um, I, I would have appreciated during Ms. Moyer's presentation, if, uh, if the presentation had included exhibits so that her, she referred back and forth to the, um, CIP and adjusting numbers, but that was completely, uh, uh, not transparent to me as somebody watching on Zoom. And I'm sure, you know, you're the only ones at City Council who would have had any exhibits in front of you. And so I think I'd appreciate very much if we had greater transparency when we're talking about finance discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Would you please, uh, approach the podium?
Hi, Alex Avery, 742 Opie Street.
Good evening, Mr. Avery.
Thirty-year resident, served on the historic district with your colleague Brad there. Um, one of the reasons I'm a resident, long-term resident of the city of Stanton is three core services the city provides. Water, sewer, and trash. And now, and I'm bringing very weighty issues to the council tonight. The trash has become problematic. And I knew when I got the mailer a little while ago that I was gonna have an issue with it because it requires some behavioral modification. And, um, so I, I generate a lot of trash. My family generates a lot of trash and I can't fit all of my trash most of the time in one bin. Now, I'd be happy to buy a second bin from the city or I have a bin that I think would work with the robotic arm. But no, I can lease a, a ba- a, a bin for $12.50 a month, but I can't buy a bin. So I'm paying extra for the extra bin service whether I use it or not, or I can do the, the bag tag thing, which is these stickers. And, um, and I've not used the stickers. I, on principle, I think the stickers are, are, are nickel and diming situation. So I proudly have my, my, I have three. I lost one of my three violations of the sticker policy on my extra bags of trash. And, uh, so I might get them laminated and put as earrings on my trash can. I don't know. Um, so now, um, they've re, they just ref- refused to collect, uh, two bags of perfectly acceptable trash, but because I didn't have the stickers and I've run out of warning, uh, warnings, they didn't pick up the two bags of trash. So I went and, and I'd already emailed my concerns about the sticker program to Ms. Beauregard and, uh, and I went to, to, to re-express my, um, decided, my, my displeasure with this sticker program and the way this is being administered to the, to Ms. Beauregard, uh, uh, again. And the, the, her deputy was there and so I did that. And I went and I, I expressed this also to Public Works up at the water tower on the hill. And what was interesting when, when, and all of this in good humor. I mean, I'm not angry about any of this. But Chris at Public Works came out to meet me and they'd asked me my address. I didn't realize quite why. He had a picture of the trash that they did not pick up that day, that morning to show me that it did not, I did not have the stickers. And I'm glad that Pastor Todd started the discussion this evening with about relationship because I think this sticker program is a relationship issue with the residents of the city. I don't mind paying more for trash. My proposal would be if the current assessment is not enough to cover the trash, don't nickel and dime me and make me go buy dollar stickers and put them on the bags and all of that. Just charge whatever needs to be charged to cover the three core services I want. Water, sewer, and trash. But now I realize if you're already taking pictures of the trash that you're not gonna pick up, you could just, instead of taking the picture and, and, and not picking up perfectly acceptable trash, you could just bill me for the extra bags of trash. And I'd happily pay. I'd either happily pay at extra tax rate. I'd actually happily pay for each extra bag of trash. I'd pay for an extra trash can if I didn't have to pay an extra every month to have a second trash can. So this is a relationship problem and I go back to Pastor Todd. I like my city. I'm part of the Historic Commission because I like this city. But now you're telling me that for you to just pick up good trash and you're already there, I've gotta run around and I've gotta keep stickers and have them ready and put them on the bags and do all of this. I just think that that's the wrong relationship for us to have. So I'm asking, the, the, the one concrete thing I would like is I would like an estimate of the administrative costs of the current sticker program. Because if you've got pictures that you can whip up and show me when I have not complied with your behavioral program, you have some administrative cost in this when you could just bill me. So I, I'll be back next council meeting and hope that there's an estimate on the administrative costs and I'd ask the city council to consider that maybe this is a self-defeating relationship and that we could come up with a more um, amenable and neighborly way to, to handle the extra trash. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. Mr. Kessker, do we have any hands raised online?
No, ma'am. We have no hands raised.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Lewis.
Oh, God. Yes. Zach Lewis.
You about just said.
Rockway Street, Stanton. You know, if you were building the house and you were trying to get the money for it and it keeps taking you a long time to get the money. By the, and you start out with a house of a hundred and fifty thousand. And in five years down the road, it's gonna cost you $250,000. And that's exactly what's going on. We lost eight million dollars, 8.9 million dollars. Where do we go from here? Do we kick it down the road a little further, wait a little longer? What, you suppose it's gonna cost 14 million dollars? What is it gonna cost in five years? How long do we keep waiting? How long do we say, whoa, it's gonna cost us more money then? Seventy-five years Union Town has been part of this city. And they still don't have proper sewage, water, and roads. Brother Todd said to get involved. Get involved. We sent proposition to the government with, uh, Representative Campbell, not you. Went down there and it went through. You know something? I tracked that thing the whole time it was there. She presented the bill, but she never voted for it. Each one of the phases that went through. She never voted. Her heart wasn't it? Sure, I'll do something for the people in Stanton, whatever it is. But she didn't have, she never voted for it when it was, when the committee she was on. She didn't vote against it, but she just didn't vote. So in that case, she voted against it. So how long did we wait, folks? Wait another five years? In five years, something else will come up within that five-year period? And we push it out five more years? How long does it take? When do we say, that's enough? We gotta do it now because it's gonna cost us more money then. We gotta do it now because these folks want it done. The citizens of Stanton want it done. Thank you. I was trying to control myself. Thank you.
Appreciate you, Mr. Lewis. Thank you. Are there any hands raised, Mr. Kessker?
Yes, ma'am.
Please, uh, go ahead, ca- uh, caller. Can you hear me? Ms. Crawford?
Hmm.
Hello?
Oh, yes, we can hear you now.
Okay.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening. My name is Cynthia Crawford, um, Stanton, Virginia. I just want to, um, commend Mr. Lewis and, um, for his, uh, comments and his diligent, um, time to try to make some difference with Union Town. And, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, with his, uh, diligence, that with working with city, that something can get done, uh, before it's all done. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Thank you.
Good evening. Aaron Barmer, Snack in Virginia. Um, I too wish to read a couple of things into the record. First thing, Radio IQ WVTF published August 11th, headlined by Brad Cutner, "Virginia National Guard Soldiers to Begin Training with ICE Later This Month." Uh, the actual announcement reads, "The Virginia National Guard is finalizing plans to mobilize approximately 60 soldiers and airmen with a mission to provide administrative and logistics support to U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement at locations across the state. VNG personnel will not conduct law enforcement functions and VNG support will not include making arrests. VNG planners have been in direct coordination with ICE officials in Virginia to develop a support plan and implementation timeline based on the specific needs of operations in Virginia. Administrative and logistics support tasks could include, but are not limited to, answering phones, data entry, appointment scheduling, biometric collection, performing basic vehicle maintenance, and tracking fleet expenses and utilization. VNG personnel are scheduled to conduct in-processing and training at the end of August and should be on duty by early September, but schedule could shift as plans are finalized. VNG soldiers and airmen will report directly to ICE leadership at their assigned duty locations, but remain under the control and direction of the Virginia Governor and Adjutant General of Virginia. The Department of Defense announced July 25th, 2025, the duty status of military personnel supporting U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement and its immigration law enforcement mission would transition from Title 10 to Title 32 status. Under Title 32, Section 502-F of the U.S. Code, National Guard personnel will support, will provide support to ICE in a federally funded and regulated status while remaining under the command and control of their respective state governors. Um, as we know, the District of Columbia is not a state and does not have a governor and at this hour is fully under federal control. Uh, Mr. Kessker, uh, thank you for your service to the city of Stanton. Uh, I presume you will be in a clerk of council role in your, in the city of Richmond. You'll have a great deal more on your plate. Uh, likely the administration will have a few, uh, things for you to do. Uh, you're moving to, I think, a majority-black city and we all know how the administration. You're moving to, I think, a majority black city and we all know how the administration feels about majority black cities. You should probably bring an extra pair of underpants. One other thing. Um, if anybody's been reading the Augusta Free Press lately, Chris Graham over at the Augusta Free Press has really been on a roll lately. And I just want to make sure everyone knows that they should read from Augusta, uh, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five, published in the evening. Stanton residents elected a government that doesn't represent them. Everybody should just head over there and read that when they have some time. And I think we all know that we recently passed the horrifying, disgraceful and inevitable. I suppose you could call it a turning point in American history, which occurred in Charlottesville of several years back where, what are you going to do? Unchecked white supremacy. They show up and kill people. So since nothing really has changed, except some of the lettering and signage here and there. And most white people don't do anything about stopping the white supremacists that they know and give the pass to. Let's just hope as federal control takes control everywhere that it won't be the white people we thought we could count on peering out the blinds as the brown people wave or say, help me as we're taken away in trucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barmer. Mr. Kessinger, is there, do we have a hand raised?
No, ma'am. We have no hands raised.
If anyone else who would like to speak at Matters from the Public. In that case, the, uh, this evening's, uh, Stanton City Council meeting is adjourned. Thank you for.